Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, April 2nd, 2025, Haldane Board of Education Workshop Meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the political leaders.
The political leaders, the United States of America, the two republics, representative states, education, individual, literacy, and adjustment.
Yes, okay, President Clements here, Vice President Valentine here, trustee McNally.
Here.
Trustee Cooper here. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, but I'm actually going to make a motion to make a slight modification for the board to go into a very brief executive session to discuss input that we've received from the district's council. So I'm going to make that motion and we'll actually put it in right after this. We'll go out briefly and then back. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, so that's we modified the agenda, so now I'm actually going to make a motion to go into executive session. May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we will be back. Um, alright, so now comments from the school board president, that's me. So the Haldane Board of Education will conduct a business meeting on Tuesday, May 6th at 7 o'clock here in the middle school, high school library. And it's actually an important meeting, even though it's a business meeting, we're going to have a presentation from Ola Consulting, who did an Icerda Flex Tech Study where they really went through the whole district and worked to identify areas where we could possibly implement energy efficient measures along with their costs and the potential for cost savings. That's something we've been hearing about for a while, and so we'll have that presentation at our next meeting. The only other thing I wanted to say, I did text the board this. So I went to the middle school play, which was great, but before I went, I got a text from our incoming superintendent, Dr. Duffy, saying that she was with me. I was like, oh, great, like, I'm seeing her, I'll say hi, whatever. I walk in, she's standing at the table where Daniel Peck McCarthy is selling tickets, handing out programs and introducing herself to everybody who comes in to the odd triumph, which I thought was a very nice thing for her to do. And then she and I sat together during the play and had a chance to visit. And the play was really great and.
Fantastic.
That is really, we have a lot to cover in the meeting, so I'm keeping my comments short. I'll hand it over to Mr. Albano.
Okay, good evening. I will also keep my comments brief. First, just starting with the state budget, no news, no budget yet as of this evening. But the good news is, we really expect that the proposed educational funding will at least remain at the levels that the governor proposed, or possibly a small increase because both the Assembly and the Senate have recommended some increases in some different areas. The holdups seem to be related to discovery law, mental health policies, nothing really related to education. So we are confident in the budget that we present a leader this evening, that the numbers are conservative, and we will receive at least the amount that we have considered into the budget bus. Excuse me. Peggy and I, on April 7th, it's been a while since we've gotten together for a board meeting. On April 7th, we attended a regionalization meeting hosted by Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses Districts across the 18 component districts where there are board members, as well as superintendents, and the topics covered were pre-K, transportation, workforce development, ENL programming for older students, that 18 to 21 age range, and how we could support them more effectively. SEL, mental health, school security, resource officers were all on the table. This is, this list may grow, but it was just the start of a brainstorming, and we're looking for, you know, either policy changes or funding and collaboration in all of these areas that can mutually benefit districts in the region. So those discussions will continue in early May, and we look forward to what results emerge from that.
Can I pop in?
Absolutely.
So one of the things that became really clear in talking about it was already, everything mentioned are certainly things that are important to the constituent districts, but it also just became clear already, and we know this, how PNDW Bowses already has really done such a good job of really facilitating collaboration across member districts. And so that was a nice thing to, you know, to recognize how much they're already doing, or we're doing, I guess.
Sure. Related to our architectural design presentation this evening, good news, we met with our consultant Highland Electric Fleets and Central Hudson Gas and Electric about two weeks ago. They were here on site and related to our transition to EV buses, they assured us that they could run a transformer directly behind the bus garage at no expense to the district. So Highland Electric, I'm, excuse me, Central Hudson would incur that expense, and then the district would simply need to trench across the road, probably about 50 or 60 feet, Adam, we talked about that. We were worried that potentially we would need to run electricity from 9D. So we've confirmed that that's not necessary. It'll be much more affordable. So the unknowns still are the EPA grant. We still have not heard. We're hoping within a few weeks, we hear about the EPA funding, and then of course, if that comes through, we will pursue Nicerda funding. But with both grants, this would definitely be a feasible project. Again, reminder, we are pursuing four electric buses. It would not be for this upcoming school year. It would take at least two years if everything fell into place for those buses to hit the roads. Also, I just want to say I had the honor to join Mrs. Sniffin and Mrs. Kochin at the Westchester County Youth Award Ceremony a couple of weeks back, and one of our students, Christian Ferrer and Josephine Foley Hedlin, were honored with students throughout the county. Beautiful ceremony, outstanding students, and you know, what struck me, they educated me a bit because I wasn't so familiar with youth court here in Putnam County, but what an outstanding program. And our students talked about how, you know, they've done many community service projects and do a lot of volunteerism, but that that was the single most interesting and engaging and rewarding activity that they participated in. So Christian's here, I know he's making a presentation shortly, but we're very proud of him, as well as Josephine, the really outstanding students. And lastly, one of our teachers, Michelle Codaro, our high school social studies teacher, has won an award and a very prestigious award from the Westchester Lower Hudson Valley Council for Social Studies Teachers. She has won, the award is the Outstanding High School Social Studies Teacher Award, and she's being honored, let's see, it's on May 21st at Manhattanville College in Reed Castle, Reed Castle, excuse me. And basically, the announcement states that this honor recognizes her exceptional dedication, innovation, teaching, innovative teaching practices, and commitment to fostering a deep understanding of social studies among students. Her work exemplifies the very best in our profession, and her efforts have clearly made a lasting impact on students and colleagues. So we're very proud of her, and I'm sure Mrs. Sniffin will be celebrating this wonderful. With her, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now it's time for our monthly update from student advisors. And so this month, we have Christian, I hope I say your name right, Ferrera, who's the senior class president, and Jake Powers, who's the senior class vice president. Come up, you'd appreciate it.
Pre-game, pre-game?
Yeah. So let's start off about talking about our Haldane varsity golf team. We're already halfway through the spring golf season, and this is one of the largest, if not the largest, varsity golf teams in Haldane history. We have over 30 students participating in the sport. We've had three matches so far. Despite our lack of experience, we've found ways to reform against schools like Arlington, Clarkstown South, and Henry Hudson, the Cleveland Panthers. In our joint match versus Hen Hood and Clarkstown South, we were able to outscore Hen Hood by just one stroke. We've had our recent losses to Lakeland Panis and Arlington, but we hope to bounce back later this week in our matches against Putnam Valley and Henry Hudson. As a senior who has been on the team for all four years of high school, it's been amazing to see the team grow in size and skill. Now I'd like to talk about the Haldane Drama Production Into the Woods. It was amazing. I saw it twice. From the beginning to the end of each and every performance, everybody in the crowd was cheering and laughing with three shows from March 21st and March, to March 23rd, including an understudy performance on March 20th. The cast and crew did an amazing job, and my brother Owen Powers played Cinderella's prince in his biggest role yet with Haldane Drama, and he did an amazing job.
Aww.
Very nice.
Jake is golf co-ed?
It is.
Okay, thanks.
So where do you go practice?
We practice at Haldane's, or, I'm sorry, Highlands Country Club, yeah. I wanted to talk about the senior class trip to Philadelphia at the end of last month. The student council, Jake and I, along with everyone else, decided on Philadelphia. So we were able to go to the city for three days where we saw the Liberty Bell, and we were, we got to visit the historic Christ Church. We went to Betsy Ross's house in the National Constitution Center, where I saw the Bill of Rights in a big glass box with fancy lights. We went to a 76ers game, and then we also went to the Eastern State Penitentiary, Penitentiary, and we got to go through two or three wings. We went inside the cells, so that was very cool. On the final day, we went across the river to Camden, New Jersey for a tour of the battleship New Jersey. And I think I can speak for everyone when I say that it was a very good trip, and it was definitely a big highlight of the senior year. I had prepared something about the award dinner, but that was kind of stolen from it. So I want to talk more in-depth about youth court for a minute. Sign your kids up. You can join at 12, and you basically work with real juvenile defendants. They, and you act as defendant, not defendant, sorry, defense counsel, prosecution. My personal favorite role is the youth mentor. So you meet, you meet with the family, like the parents and the defendant ahead of time, and make sure they understand everything. And then the day of, you meet them before anything starts, and you introduce them to everyone and make sure they're comfortable, and they don't have any questions. So it's, it's real defendants. They get, if it's a more serious case, like we've had anywhere from assault to like speeding, so they get recommended by the probation office to the Putnam County Youth Bureau, and then they send them to the Phillips Town Justice Court, just down the road. And so we go through everything with them, what happened. I've only been on the defense side, so we sit with them and we get like a story and paint a picture of who they are, and then we present the case to a judge who is also a high school student or a middle school student, and then they decide what the best like suggestive, like, like, not punishment, but more of a restorative suggestion for them to do. So it could be anything from X amount of community service hours to going on a jail tour in Carmel. So it's a very good program. It's with the Putnam County Youth Bureau, and I've been a part of it since February of my sophomore year. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why did you all choose Philadelphia? I mean, I think Philadelphia is fantastic, but like, what, like, what was the draw for Philadelphia for the senior?
Yes, we kind of wanted to be a little bit different because last year they went to Boston, and we had Philadelphia and Boston. And I think most of us in student council haven't been in Philadelphia, at least I haven't, but it's a great choice in my opinion. Yes, there's, there's a lot of history in the city itself, so it's just, it was a very cool place to go.
And how'd you guys come up with the idea to go to Eastern State?
Uh, we didn't really pick, we picked some of the itinerary, but Gerber Tours and Coach Virgadama really organized it.
Who's cell did you go in?
Oh, yeah, Jake.
Is it Al Capone, was it? He does? Yeah. Did they have the models of like the guy under the sheet?
Well, it was, it was very cool because every cell was like, like very destroyed and like very, like there was just dirt everywhere, and it looked like it wasn't very well maintained. But then you go to his cell, and there's, there's a desk and a dresser and like a phone and a very nice bed. Everything else is just like, like a very thin, like pad for the bed. But his is just like, it's like royalty, yeah. As far as royalty in prison.
You, I know, you happen to be one of my tour guides when I was over at high school, and you had talked a little bit about other ways in which you serve, and you discussed the mentorship program that you participated in here in Haldane.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, if you can talk a little bit about that program?
Sure. So that's also through the youth bureau. They come, I was there this afternoon, actually. It's every Tuesday. So every high school student is welcome to join. I don't know how the fifth graders, I think their parents seem to sign them up, but it's every hour we go, we meet in Ms. Hartford's room. We just, like today, since it's Earth Day, we, we made wing chimes, and we drew with paint markers on them. You just like hang out with them, have snacks, do whatever they want, really. They kind of, we kind of let them lead it, and then from there, like, they just decide where the conversation goes.
Thanks so much.
Um, alright, so now our special presentation for tonight's meeting is CS Arts to give us an update on the capital project. So, oh, I didn't see Tom walk in. So Tom and Melissa are here. Great.
That is a tough act to follow. You have some pretty.
Yeah, where's your, where's your game?
I was probably wearing one at the moment.
I was very impressed that he said he would only have the dispense.
So we're happy to join you all this evening and share a little bit of a progress update on the capra project. I'm sure many of you have been wondering what's been going on. We've been hard at work since the referendum in December, so I'd like to share a little bit about where we are in this process and what we've done in that time. So this is a look at our project schedule. You can see the first three bars here in the light blue are really the design phase, and this is where we are right now. So we have, this design phase is broken up into three different segments. We call those schematic design, design development and construction documents. That's pretty standard for architecture and in our industry. We completed a schematic design report, which we'll talk about in a moment, and we are about halfway through our design development phase right now. As we work from left to right, we're just continuing to add detail, refine that project a little bit more. So we start out varied, as it's called, schematic, and work our all the way down to the set of construction documents that are submitted to the state education department. They take some time to review and approve that project. They are your permitting agency. Then that gets packaged up in a bid package, and it gets publicly bid, and we award contracts, and then we'll be starting construction. Right now, we're targeting a spring 2026 construction, wrapping up at the end of the following calendar year in December of 2027.
So hopefully we'll steal a little time out of the schedule. The education department right now, third-party reviews are having a good impact, and so the reviews, that review and approval cycle is less than three months of what we're predicting. So we're hoping that we'll steal a little bit of time, get out the bid a little bit earlier. Sure Lou would like that. And, you know, get contractors under contract much before that they're, they're full up for the season, for the summer. So, so that's, that's a little bit of good news.
So as I mentioned, we did recently finish our schematic design phase, and what that really, that project process looked like was a lot of meetings with stakeholder groups. You can see there's about six we've identified here, different user groups that we met with. Most of these groups we met with multiple times, both in person and virtually, to gather a lot of information so that we are designing spaces that are well-aligned with your instructional and programmatic needs. And so we met with different stakeholders for the student center, student support suites, meetings, psychologists, social worker and such at both buildings, as well as the main office components to that, and secure vestibules were kind of wrapped into that meeting. We talked about steam innovation spaces at both buildings, met with some staff for general purpose classrooms, as well as an art classroom. And then we had a few separate meetings focused more on the building addition at the high school and the exterior facade and what that would look like. Along with this process, we've had regular, what we call OACM meetings. That stands for Owner Architect and Construction Manager. So we have representatives of all three of these groups at these meetings and providing again, status updates of what's coming out of the stakeholder groups, sharing some concept plans, so they are up to date on where we are in the process, and help make some administrative level decisions, as well as execute different information finding things. So if we need to have geotechnical reports, site surveys, we talk about those type of things, and then just manage the overall process for schedule and budget at those meetings as well. We also took a few building tours. Staff went to Chappaqua to look at their steam innovation spaces, and then a large group of us went to Marlborough Central School District and toured many of their recently finished spaces that included a lot of these areas that we're focusing on here. So they have some newly renovated student support suites, some steam innovation space, spaces, art classrooms. So that was a good point of reference. I know Julie attended, thought that was very valuable to actually see these spaces. I think you mentioned your social workers and social workers, psychologists. It was nice to see this is what a true student support suite can look like as far as a reception area, welcoming place for students to come in, receive counseling, what those offices look like, and really just to walk through an actual project. Sometimes you only know what you know, and you're so used to the spaces that you have. It's nice to get a point of reference at other locations as well. And then lastly, part of our schematic design phase is really just gathering a lot of information on the existing conditions. So coming out, photographing, measuring, identifying, and evaluating the existing spaces that you have that are being renovated or where we're connecting for new buildings, as well as getting things geared up for geotech, site survey, hazardous materials for asbestos, lead, and investigations of that nature. So the culmination of all of that is what we refer to as our schematic design report. Here's just a few little snippet pages of that, but it's quite a lengthy document. There's about 90 pages that are just in narrative, and you can see we have some building elevations, enlarged plans, or concept plans for some of those focus areas, and supporting graphics. You can see some three-dimensional views here. There are also complement of 25 full-size drawings that are again schematic in nature, start to identify the scope, the targeted scope for all of these areas. And then there's a significant appendix that also documents all the meeting minutes and concept plans that we've reviewed throughout that entire process. So where are we now? Just wanted to share where the design progress is at this point in time. So start with the high school. You're seeing here the overall building plans of your high school. If you haven't seen plans or an update in a while, you'll notice that it's no longer an octagon or a hexagon at the end of the building. We've kind of straightened this out here for multiple reasons. We're finding that it's more efficient for space use within this space. And as we develop those exterior renderings, you'll see in a little while what that has brought us to as far as what the exterior of this building will look like contextually on your campus here. And so at the top here, we'll look at the steam innovation spaces and woodshop. It's in the light blue there, upper left. The orange is the student support suite for this high school area. The large green area is the student center, which we'll take a closer look at. There's also some support spaces for storage, a breakout or conference room. And then up on the second floor, we have four general purpose classrooms. In the darker blue is an art classroom. Again, additional support spaces for storage and mechanical and such in the gray, and then an additional breakout or conference room on that second floor. Here are updates of the exterior proposed renderings for this building addition. So again, we've moved and shifted away from that octagon. We're now representing here in more modern take. We feel that this is still speaking to and responding to the context of your existing campus, your existing buildings, drawing from some of those materials, but is also more modern reflection of the modern instruction that is happening in this space. So this is your student center. You can see your existing building at the end of that, up to that white little column there, and then the two-story brick area with that student support offices on the first floor, and classrooms up on the second floor. And then you're seeing that new entrance to the student center. And here's a different view taken as you come up the hill from the main building playground area as you would walk up the hill and the vantage point you would have there.
So just point out, just so nobody's confused. So this is nobody's confused. So your existing building, your existing high school right now ends here. Oh. I messed you up. Ends here, and then you have that stair tower that hangs off the end of the building. So the stair tower will come out. And then this is the addition is the two-story section here, and then the large student center at the end. Just so everybody has a clear picture of what's included in that.
Again, this is the result of several stakeholder meetings, our own internal design and development, and the district also had some interested parties, some community members who have a rich architecture and art-rich community here. So we had a few community members that participated in that charrette process as well, provided some feedback and thought process, and this is where we are at this point in time. So like I said, a modern reflection of the modern instruction, but still contextually appropriate for your, your campus and your position here attached to the high school. See some of that natural stonework, and then the brick and basinery and a lot of glass in the front to really capture that view. And you'll see what that looks like at the interior as well. So here's a closer look at the plan of that proposed student center. At the top left, that pair of doors there is your entry from the interior of the building, coming from the corridor. This is probably the point of entry that most students will be using on a regular basis.
Of course.
Thank you. So this is the entry point that students will generally be using throughout the course of the day. There is an intention that the main entrance of the building will still be used throughout the day. So visitors will still be going through that secure vestibule. Students, as they go in between buildings, will still be using that main secure vestibule. At the bottom left corner there, you'll see another vestibule that we've added. Those were the doors that you saw in the rendering. This is another primary entrance into this space, but one it's envisioned to really be utilized nights, events, weekends, things of that nature. You can change protocol and decide to allow students to use this in the future, but really the intention is that is more for after-school events and weekend use. The two shaded areas in beige or the tan color here, we wanted to point out. So the one at the upper that kind of has a little kink to it, it's what we refer to as a learning stair. You'll start to see that in renderings in a few minutes. That does have tiered risers to it, but it has a higher rise than a traditional stair. There is a stair next to it there, so you still have the ability to walk traditional stairs up and down. But the learning stair gives students a place to, when it's cafeteria use, students can casually sit in lounge and eat or gather with their friends. And when this space is used in an event, it actually acts as an overflow tiered seating area for those functions. So kind of like an auditorium type or amphitheater type seating where you have tiered risers, and then there's intermediate steps in between there. So you'll start to see these in the renderings in a moment. There's also a little control booth at the back there because we're facing now orienting, because we're moved, we've shifted away from the octagon, which really didn't have any directionality to it. Now that we have this rectilinear form, we are capturing that view, and we've created a very strong directionality to this space. So that tan bar at the bottom, I guess, left corner here is a platform. So not as high of a rise as a full stage, but it is a foot up or so, and is a staged platform. So during the day, there is just additional tables and chairs up there for students to sit and still eat. The entire space acts as a cafeteria, but when you. But when you have vents and you want to rearrange furniture, that stage platform allows a presenter or a group to have a little bit more of a presence as they stand in front of that area. They are standing in front of the glass, so when you want to capture the view behind them, you have the ability to do that. Or also envisioning a large draw curtain, so that if you want to conceal that view and avoid that distraction, or if there are any glare issues, you have the ability to do that. We're also looking at ways to control light and glare through the selection of the glass. And other ways, we can provide shades and other ways to control that light in addition to the curtains. So it does not just open or close, but there are other ways to control that light as well. Off to the top left, you see a breakout room or conference room that can be used by the adjacent support suite staff members, as well as students that they're meeting in groups. And that does have an oversight or overview glass that overlooks the student center. So you'll see that in the renderings in a moment. And then to the left, you also see a storage room and a concessions area or a food service area that's also acts as a reception area. So as people are coming in for evening events, someone could be there selling tickets, selling merchandise, handing out materials, paperwork, flyers, anything like that as people approach and enter the space for those evening events. But that is also where students, when this is in use as a cafeteria, can serve as a grab-and-go type station where students can pick up pre-prepared boxed meals, snacks, drinks, whatever you're providing in that area. And you'll see a lot of variation in the furniture. Exact furniture has not been selected yet, but these are just some examples, meeting the capacity that is desired by the district, but also offering students a lot of choice and variety in how they're seating. So whether a student wants to sit independently up against a counter or they want to sit with just one friend in a booth, a little bit more intimate, more like a Panera-type situation. Or there are a large variety of two-person, four-person tables, and then larger cafeteria tables, which help us get that maximum occupancy in the space. So providing students a lot of choice and variety, in addition to the learning stair. So here's a little bit more of a three-dimensional view of that. You can see again that glass to the left, you see that platform in front of it right now, set up with some tables and chairs. And you're starting to get a three-dimensional view of what that learning stair looks like. And you see the little control booth center at the back there. You can see the stairs that come down to get you from that upper platform landing where you're coming in from the corridor down to the lower level of the entire student center. Again, we're working with the grade of your existing hill here. So the main level of the student center is about six feet lower than the corridor or an upper landing area. Here's a rendering of as you approach from that after-hours or visitor entrance. To the left, you're seeing that reception or concessions area. This is where students would have access to that grab-and-go for cafeteria functions. But this is also again where you'd have the ability to sell tickets or hand out materials for those events. And you're starting to get a glimpse of this space. So you can see the learning stair in the back, and it's interesting and it draws people in, but it has not yet revealed itself, the whole room, until you walk past that wall. We're still developing what this wall wants to be. We might bring it back a little bit and open that space up a little bit more. That's still things that we're working through the design of. You can also see the glass kind of in the center of the page there. That glass area is the breakout conference room behind there. So again, from that conference room, you'd have a little bit of view in. And likely we'll have a translucent film on that. So we're allowing light, but still maintaining some privacy. Here's a view from the stage platform area, looking back at that learning stair. You can see the stone wall that is shown from the exterior rendering now makes its way to the interior. So bringing some of that exterior material in. And then otherwise providing a large volume and a nice modern space for your staff and students. And then lastly, now we're at one of the corners of the learning stair. So you can see some of that more to the right, but now you're looking and seeing the view that you're capturing out that large glass wall. And one more from the top of the learning stair, looking down. Again, seeing the large expansive area of the student center. So now moving on, we're now looking at the student support suite. I will add to the bottom right, there is a key plan there. So if you're trying to track where we are in the building as we go through some of these spaces, that is highlighted for you. So this is the student support suite. So you can see there are two entrances from the corridor. One into a large student support reception area. And then a secondary one into the dean's reception area. So we are separating discipline from counseling in some way here. They are interconnected through an alternative learning space that can be used for testing, in-school suspension, that allows passage between them, but also supervision of that space by administrators on either side of that. And then we have five flanking offices from that student support reception area for psychologists, social workers, guidance and such. We have increased the size of this reception area from what our preliminary or original plans were in response to those tours that we took at Marlboro to see what that reception area can be. It is not just someone coming in, talking to a desk, talking to someone at a desk and then going to an office. But this may be a place where they are coming to fill out college paperwork. And then there's tables in a couch area. So whether they're waiting to meet with a counselor or they're actually conducting their own business, they might be studying, maybe this is an alternative place for students to go when they have a study hall or lunch period. We want to make sure this is a welcoming space for students to feel comfortable going to against guidance counselor or any other counselor here. And there's just some three-dimensional views of what that looks like in both directions. So you can start to visualize some of the proposed furniture or just the space use. Again, furniture isn't selected at this point in time. We are showing it really to give you a better sense of space, so you can visualize what an office would look like as far as what type of desk or size desk it would accommodate, table, furniture, et cetera. Moving across the hall, these are the steam innovation rooms. It's divided into two spaces. You do see two separate doors there. On the left is the steam innovation lab, more of a classroom environment. But again, a hands-on, very engaging classroom. And then through that pair of doors, you connect to the woodshop area. So we're separating clean lab from dirty lab functions so that we don't have issues with dust and sawdust and things affecting computers or other technologies. But you'll see in a moment, really, these spaces are intended to be a lot of support for hands-on activities for your students. So there are a lot of 3D printers and computer space in the innovation room. Some large work tables, interactive monitors and display monitors throughout the room. So there's not just a singular point of projection for technology, but you're providing that throughout the room in multiple versions. As well as a lot of whiteboard space and storage, so that these spaces are are providing everything that you need. Additionally, the woodshop area to the right now, we're starting to show some of the equipment that is in there, as well as large work tables, and then some additional dedicated space for storage of their materials. An overhead door takes you to the exterior and a small paved or concrete pad out there, so that you have the ability to build spaces, build projects outside as well, when weather permits them to do so. So again, here's our 3D views of those. And you're starting to see in the upper right, some examples of some of the components that we're proposing here as far as sliding whiteboards that allow storage behind there, but still a whiteboard function on those doors. So we're getting dual-purpose and really multipurpose out of some of these spaces. The space is at a premium. We want to make sure that we're providing everything that you need. So it's not just a whiteboard, or it's not just storage. We're able to accommodate both in the same space. Be more efficient with that space, and that gives you more space for 3D printers and technology for the future. And another quick rendering of that space. We're not yet applying any color. I didn't mention this earlier, but when we were looking at the renderings of the student center, we only threw in a couple little places of color. I think you saw a few blue accents there, just to help visualize maybe where we would draw attention. But those things really are not developed at this point. And that is really towards the end of this page and largely in the next design phase for construction documents, where we will be selecting actual materials, colors, and where they will be applied. So it'll be a much more colorful, engaging space when we get there. Moving on to the general purpose classrooms. Again, trying to take a modern view of what does a classroom environment look like. So while we do have a primary teaching wall with a full-wall whiteboard and interactive technology, we're also providing a variety of furniture here and a lot of mobile furniture. So you're not seeing any built-in cabinetry here. We're providing storage or suggesting we provide storage with furniture solutions on casters. So you can rearrange these rooms. We're providing choice, again, flexibility in furniture. So students are provided a more engaging and dynamic teaching space, not rows of students in desks and chairs facing forward, but a more interactive, collaborative environment. Moving on, I think this is the last one for the high school, is the art classroom. And see just the 3D view on the right there, a lot of storage needs. In this case, it is built in because we know that the storage needs for art are a little bit more fixed for those materials, but providing everything they need for large flat file paper storage, project storage portfolios, things of that nature. And then there is an adjacent kiln room and storage room for the art program as well. And this is one of those spaces that as you move art to the high school, you free up additional space in this building for other purposes. So by one maneuver in one building, you're actually helping yourself in two locations. And now moving on to the main building. Again, you have your key plan down there on the right. That little tiny arrow shows you the main entrance. So right now, we're to the left of that, which is currently the side for the main office. We are again swapping the main office and the nurse. So reconfiguring this area, we now have a large public conference room right off of that vestibule, and then a dedicated nurses' suite with their own bathroom. And then two individual staff bathrooms immediately accessed from the corridor. So staff do not have to use a stall in a student's bathroom or go through a conference room to use a bathroom. We now have two dedicated staff bathrooms accessible from the corridor. And again, three-dimensional views of what that will look like. And then now we see on the left here, the secure vestibule. We are adding a new wall and set of doors to provide a secure vestibule and a transaction window between that vestibule and the main office. We're doing a similar maneuver at the high school, which we did not show. But so in both buildings, you will have a secure vestibule where a visitor is contained until they go through the credential process at that transaction window and are granted access and released into the building. You see here, we are providing another bathroom to support staff and students using this area. Another alternative learning space, just as we did at the high school. And then here we have the principal's office, the SRO office, and a copy mailroom. That copy mailroom, similar to what we were doing at the high school, is the interconnect between the disciplinary or main office function and the student support suite, which you'll see as we work our way down the hall. So there's that three-dimensional view. You can now see that secure vestibule and the large doors there that separate you from the corridor. So your security grid will now be in a secure location in that main office. There's also, you'll see a window from the SRO office so that that staff member can look through that window and have immediate observation of that transaction window and a quick access immediately out to the corridor. Moving down the hall, this is the student support suite for the main building. Similar scenario here with a smaller reception area, but we are entering into a kind of a holding area. We do have some furniture here for staff that are, staff or students that are waiting to meet with someone. Some shelving for a little bit of shared storage and resources. And then six offices for your counseling staff here. Three-dimensional view. You'll see some high windows on a lot of these walls because we have some inner office areas. If I go back to the first plan here, we have some offices that are up against the corridor and really don't have the ability to have an exterior window. So you can see those high clear story windows will allow some of that natural light from the offices at the exterior to enter into that little inter-passage or corridor, and then into those offices as well. And it also gives staff and students in those inner offices at least a sense of space outside the room, even if you don't have the actual view or operable window. And then moving downstairs, the last space at the main building we want to highlight today is the steam innovation here. So this is where you currently have a technology space and some adjacent IT space that is being multipurposed and utilized. I think this semester for some other purposes, I can give some counselors down there now in a process to vacate this area for this renovation. So again, similar to the high school, we're separating the available space into two different zones. So we have a clean lab and a dirty lab side. So on the left, we have a woodshop with an overhead door. It is a smaller woodshop in this scenario, but supports the programmatic needs for instruction during the day, as well as the ability to support theater production of stage materials and things when it's needed for that purpose. But the bulk of the space here is provided for student instruction during the day in the steam lab. That's the space on the right. You have similar functions for that whiteboard and storage materials. A lot of space for 3D printers and see your tables and chairs, seating for students as well. And just some three-dimensional views of that space. Tom, if you could share a bit about our site work?
And of course, along with all of this, we want to make some improvements to the site and the site work components as part of addressing the new addition to the high school and some other needs on the campus. So just take you through it. You can see that we're really focusing on the separation of vehicular bus movements for parent drop-off and pickups and bus drop-off and pickups. And so we've created zones around the campus for that purpose. So you can see zones here, and you can see zones here that will allow for those drop-off and pickups. And again, trying to keep those very independent of one another for obviously safety of the students during the drop-off and pickup zones. We're also trying to improve the ability for the students to safely traverse between the main building and the high school. Even though we're building this big addition, you're still going to have some pathways there. And so we're creating, you know, these areas of really new dedicated sidewalks that meet all the safety requirements to get students safely in between the buildings. You can see we're also trying to address and update some of the patio areas that are outside the buildings. So two in front of the high school. And you know, I've been here, I can't tell you how many times, and there's always students in front of the building, studying or reading or eating their lunch, which is great. And so we really want to better define that. We also have a big plaza at the front of the main building for the purpose of, again, making those strong pathways. You can see now, we've actually added a small little traffic circle and a pinch point on the site, which always is problematic. And we do have a gated crossing here. So we are able to control and limit how vehicles move between both the high school main building or the school side to the administrative and bus depot. So all of the asphalt from here all the way through and down Craig Side Drive, as well as this whole loop, is being upgraded. Again, we're looking at, you know, upgrading it to heavy-duty pavements for the bus, the bus movements especially. We're also looking at trying to increase parking where we can. We're really getting ourselves staged for the district's longer-term plan for eventually going full electric vacation of buses. We aren't doing anything with this parking lot right now. That wasn't in this current budget. But again, we're setting it, we're setting ourselves up for future phases of this work. So that's all prepped. Everything that we're doing is considering what the long term is for that improvement.
Tom, if I could add, also, one of the other district's long-term goals is considerations for geothermal support for this campus. And if that were to happen, the logical place for that to occur would be behind the high school. So to be fiscally responsible, we're making sure that we're not touching that area now, so it doesn't have to be disturbed in the near future if you do move in that direction.
Yeah, we didn't want to put a whole new parking lot facility in. And then later on, with the potential for geothermal, have to dig it all back up to do the well-hits. Because that is really the logical location for those, for those well-hits. And that would be quite a few. As I'm sure you're going to hear about it at your next meeting. So that'll be interesting. So that'll be interesting. I'm gonna either tune in or I'm gonna, because I'm gonna want to watch that as well. So I think that about covers everything that we're looking at relative to, to the site improvements.
And before we wrap up here, we don't have pretty pictures. These are kind of the infrastructure items that happen behind the scenes for our engineering teams, but just wanted to make sure we're not losing track of some of the other infrastructure items that are being improved. That includes fire alarm system replacement, PA intercom and clock system replacement, air conditioning at the high school, and then at the main building, bathroom renovations and electrical. And then lastly, before we close, we want to share our next step. So again, back to where we started, this is our project schedule. And you can see that red bar is where we are at the midst of our design development phase. And our next steps moving forward, we just recently received the estimate that the Columbia Group has prepared based on that schematic design report. So we call that the SD estimate. We're in the process of reviewing that now and then making sure, one, that it is accurate, reflects our design intent, but also identifying if we need to make any decisions with that design to make sure that we're in alignment with the project budget. Moving on, we're completing our design development phase. So this process includes additional investigations, as I mentioned earlier, for hazardous materials, geotechnical and site survey. We're continuing to develop the design, meeting with stakeholders and progressing the design of each one of those spaces. They are still pretty conceptual, even though they may not look like that. They are still pretty conceptual, we're continuing to refine those. And we'll be doing follow up meetings with each of those stakeholder groups to make sure that our designs are reflective of their anticipated improvements there. And we continue those regular OACM meetings with the district and the construction manager to make sure we're all on the same page as the project moves forward. Our target completion date for this design development phase is in June.
That was so impressive.
I really, I know, really, that was really.
I'll stress, you see a lot of emphasis on communicating, on regularized meetings, OACM meetings. You know, all of this, going back to the shareholder groups, the objective is no surprises, right? We want to make sure that everything in our design is meeting the expectation of what the district wants to see when the project is completed. So that takes a lot of work. We know it takes a lot of your time as well. We're certainly appreciative of all the time that, you know, everybody has provided us to making sure that we're going through this process efficiently. You know, certainly thanks to the Plumb Group as well with their role in this and, you know, doing constructability reviews, doing the estimates, keeping everything on track, kind of keeping us on it, so to speak. But communication, so just hopefully everybody saw the emphasis on constant communication.
Right, so I haven't been part, Maggie and I haven't been part of the ongoing stakeholder groups, which there have been so many, but we have been part of the OACM meetings. And it has been really very interesting to see how the design has changed, how it was reflecting the work that the stakeholder groups were engaged in, right? And so when we're talking about stakeholders, right, we're talking about really primarily folks here at the district who will be using those spaces, who are the experts on knowing what those spaces should entail, how are we going to use them? So I've been part of those groups, but I've been part of the OACM meetings and really seeing how the design has gradually shifted and shifted with TS Arch being so responsive to the different kinds of feedback people came, you know, gave that, this current design of the student group. Like it's gone through some iterations, right? And it really has been a collaborative effort, you know, me mostly on the outside, sort of, you know, watching it take shape. But it's so much information, I can't believe you gave that so smoothly.
It is, don't try to fall out of ship, right? That's what we say. This really has to reflect, this is how they use this, it has to reflect how they use it. It's not about the architect, right? It's about the school district and making sure it reflects your values and what you need for the mission.
So I, before, I just want to make sure we have a chance to introduce Lou Rodriguez. I think Maggie and Sean had met Lou, but I don't think any of the others have had, well, I have. So just to thank for our people watching, right? So OACM owners, architects and our construction manager. And so Lou has also been a part. I thought folks with, might have questions about how the, you know, the pricing is sort of beginning to develop. I thought there was a chance people might, I'm not saying you need to ask a question, but I did ask Lou to be here in case those questions were brought up. But yeah.
I, sorry, I had a quick design question about the, could you talk a little bit, there's a patio on the other side of, so the main building and there's a bigger traffic circle and then there's a patio on that side? That's the first I'd seen of that.
In front of the student center?
No, down by the main building?
Down by the main building.
Yes, so kind of on the other, that, that's interesting, so is that?
You want to go back to this?
Sorry, it's taking out that circle.
Yes. The existing circle is there still. So the empty circle here is creating a plaza here.
But it's taking out the traffic circle, isn't it?
It is, it's taking out your traffic circle that was there. We're creating a cut in for drop offs and then that plaza receives them to this circle and then into the buildings.
Okay, and that circle is not, that's pedestrian.
This is pedestrian, this is the pedestrian. Yeah, the traffic circle that was here is being, and that really cleans up and streamlines a lot of the traffic, provides a better drop zone for the students as well, because those have to, there are requirements for that.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a feel of the flow there. So if a parent is dropping a kid off at the high school, are they still swooping past the main building? Like there's no choice, like that still has to happen, right?
So there's two potential thoughts on this. And either one, and I think, you know, the district probably have to decide which one's going to work the best. It can be that all, that all drop offs, vehicular drop offs are on this side of the, of the house and all the buses drop off here, or you can actually do it in reverse. Either one is acceptable, but the idea is that you, you don't go between those two zones during those periods. You keep the cars and the buses separate. So, and so it's really set up that you could do it in either way. And I think, you know, you'll, you'll select one and you'll see how it works. And if you say, well, this is working exactly how we would like it, you'll flip the script and you'll do it the other way to see if it makes a marked improvement. It's certainly a marked improvement over what you have currently. It's never going to be absolutely perfect, unfortunately.
I've said it numerous times, it's a challenge.
That big hill in front of the high school. Well, I like the rectangular design much more than I thought I was going to. I was kind of bummed to hear that the octagon had been. But I really, I think it looks great. I think the modern look really works. I think it looks really good. One point, one area of concern, I just want to point out, I'm a little concerned about the space between the, the dirty lab and the clean lab. I mean, sawdust gets everywhere and I'm a little concerned as you're going through those doors swooshing, the wind's going to go in and it's going to settle in those 3D printers. And I'm just wondering, you know, when it, you don't want to wait too long to make design changes to ameliorate that.
So very good question. So that's something I've been thinking about. So I think part of that is done mechanically, right? We can put that space under positive pressure so that when those doors open up, it's always going in the proper direction, infiltrating the clean space. So I think there's ways that we can control that. I think that's maybe more of our director of engineering, maybe it's a question for him
Yeah, okay.
To, to resolve, to see how he's looking at the differential pressure between those two spaces absent having a true vestibule between the two, which would take up far too much space.
And you hate to go out into the hallway and back in again, right? You do want to have a connect.
Well, there are some other ways mechanically to address that. That's a great, very constructive question.
Additionally, in both buildings, we've, I done, we've located the shop equipment on one end of the room and the 3D printers on the other end to gain as much separation from those as possible so that we're not providing, you know, both of those things on either side immediately of that door.
I'm curious about, this is about the support services in the main building. There are two spaces that are, have been omitted in this iteration, one being the de-escalation room as well as a dedicated PT and OT.
The OT PT room is there, we just didn't highlight it.
You just announced it, it's still on that corner there.
Yes, correct, did you see where our blue shading is, that kind of L shaped white room?
That's where I wasn't sure about.
Yeah, we just weren't highlighting everything and we still have bathroom renovations in some of those spaces.
Yeah, I wasn't, because I know that there had been conversation about that space being used for other purposes.
So we still have a dedicated OT PT room. We did lose the de-escalation room. Again, we are confined between the exterior wall and the corridor wall. So it's tight space and to provide all the programmatic elements here through our stakeholder group meetings, everyone agreed that it was a sacrificial maneuver here to make sure that we had adequate space for these offices. And in most cases, because this is serving your younger population, those students that need de-escalation are probably being seen by a council or not. You know, put into a separate, smaller space anyway. So we're trying to mitigate the need for that by providing more space in these offices.
In the main office space, I saw a spot where the attendance person would sit. I guess, you know, where the, where the window is going into the vestibule. Are there desks for the elementary and the middle school? I guess not the elementary, the middle school offices?
There's a, there's a second off the desk there as well.
Oh, okay.
There's actually two staff members.
Okay.
Kind of like to see this one here.
Okay.
The, the security desk is here, but there's a second one.
Thanks, I missed that.
Sometimes, sometimes these help people visualize the space and sometimes it throws you off a little bit because we remove the walls to be able to see into the space and sometimes you lose context a little bit. Yeah, any other questions?
Are the windows in the high school addition, the upper windows, are they designed to be open or are they just too high up? You would never open them.
Well, one of them has to open because it has to be served for rescue. So one of that has to be available. Operable, I think they probably will.
But we are providing air conditioning, so.
So hopefully people will.
Less need for that.
Shoulder seasons you want to.
Question, is the full SD support, uh, report, is that the document that's attached or is that something that access to?
No, that's, it came in a, I'd have to go and look.
It came in a Friday, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
No, actually, so.
Separate?
No, okay, it was part of the Friday.
Yeah.
It was part of a Friday.
It's just separate, so it's in there.
Yes, and I actually was looking at it the other day, but I can't remember. Y'all turned that out on March 18th, right? So look, we'd go back to a couple of emails come around.
I recollect it, but I couldn't remember.
What you need to keep in mind is even since the schematic design report was, was finalized, right? There have been ongoing conversations and even at this point, not everything is, you know, not everything is written in stone because new concerns may come up or new ideas may arise. I mean, people are feeling pretty good about this.
At that point in time, you're, you're correct.
Yeah, I've said it before, it is a snapshot in time.
Yeah.
The second it was printed, we still continued to develop our design. So, you know, we save pencils down, but it's, you know, for a few hours and you keep moving.
I would be curious to read the notes section, that's all just.
Oh no, we're gonna test you.
So some of what you saw today is going to be exactly in that. And then some, some of what you'll see is different because it's continued to be developed.
So we heard many reasons why we went with this design versus the octagon, but I didn't hear about cost savings. Is that a big one?
I mean, it's part of, it's part of the conversation. The octagon made it challenging to connect that to the two story and how you treat things. And it also had a larger volume, which one is going to be more costly to build, but two, it's more costly for you to heat and cool on a regular basis. So in the vein of sustainability, this is also one of those maneuvers that we think is helping you lower your upfront costs and your annual maintenance costs.
It was just a challenging form attached to this building. Again, it's, yeah, I, I really am in favor of this direction.
It's still a large volume space, but not overly so to the point where you're heating and cooling.
Aesthetically, it breaks up the, aesthetically, that breaks up the brick. Because there was, on the octagon, that was a lot of brick going into the sky. That helps break it up a hair. And this truly prioritizes that.
That and also, I think the possibility of using the space for, for other kinds of things. I mean, I think, you know, I, I think that it's not a stage, it's a, it's a platform, but I really can envision, you know, how, you know, the possibility of smaller, more student driven, you know, performances, you know, the opportunities for, yeah, I mean, that, that kind of thing.
Simple little coffee house right there, you gotta go.
We had some music staff representation at some of our stakeholder meetings too, to get some feedback on them.
Really excited.
On how, how you would envision using this space. And they don't envision it being a full band space, but it could be a smaller quartet or a smaller, you know, um, yeah. A little cabaret performance, things of that nature. You could do a, you know, senior talent night, open house. Julia's going to get up on the platform and talk to everyone about financial aid. You know, there's a lot of different things you can do here.
We could have board meetings.
You could have board meetings here.
That would be nice.
And that's the challenge for our acoustical engineer to say, you've got to accommodate all of these different uses. And we want to be acoustically perfect, of course.
And still locate a projection screen and technology so that the space is usable for a lot of different functions.
I know we're not on admin reports yet, but this seems like a more fitting place to talk about it. I think Josh Elder, you, Mr. Elder, you were at the, you went to go to Chappaqua?
I did, I got there the second time, both times.
And I think you mentioned that you were looking at some of the equipment and were making some decisions about what you would like to bring to Haldane, so.
Yeah, I think the first visit was more of like conceptual ideas around steam labs as we saw. And then the more acute need was we needed an equipment list that actually fit both of those rooms. And so Julia actually had set up the opportunity for myself and three other teachers to go there. And we went to Robert E. Bell Middle School at Chappaqua. We met with the same teacher we saw the first time, who was a wealth of information. And their labs are set up basically similar to how ours are in terms of fabrication room and kind of a wood shop and area room. And so, you know, the very, the teachers we brought had a high degree of expertise, but they were just able to speak the language with this individual and just really get a better understanding of the types of equipment. So you, you like mentioned dust and everything, so there's like dustless vacs that are hooked up to the machines and stuff. And I think one of the things that, just the takeaway from that, this guy talked about, that was eye opening for everyone. It's not like the kids are going to be operating power saws like all day. They're actually probably never going to operate the power saw, you know what I mean? So the, the dust collection is minimized in a lot of ways. So a lot of like the pre-cutting of materials is done ahead of time. So the kids are coming in, not always, but in general, doing the assembly parts of it at that point in time. So it's eye opening to just see the types of stuff we really needed. That just goes beyond the, the major machinery, but it's just all the clamps, the storage, I guess. Storage, 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 really, go from that to.
No, I actually have one question. I asked Lou to come. So one of the things I thought people might have questions about is given some of the economic uncertainty, how is our construction manager feeling about this? And that's, that's the question I have, and, and for Lou.
So yeah, great, uh, there's always, today, everybody's talking about thousands of cents. Um, what I like to do is look at a project and let's dissect it, let's start breaking it apart and talk about the pieces of how we would be bidding it. So the first piece is the site work. So when you look at the site work component, we're not looking for importing stone or importing asphalt. That's all local. Right now, your site work package is hovering at three, three and a half million dollars. So take that piece, we have quarries locally. Uh, so the site work component, that's a nice piece. Uh, the tariffs should not be affecting site work. Asphalt is petroleum based, right? So as long as the barrel of oil stays at seventy, eighty dollars, we're going to be fine. You move to the building, the building addition, uh, it's masonry, right? You have some steel there, but really, when you look at it, local, we have, uh, local block houses. We have local nation, like all local places that actually manufacture stone here. Um, the steel would be a component. So is it a US company that we're buying steel from or is it a China company that we're buying steel from? A lot of times we try to really, when we write the contract docs, we really like to push towards American made products. So when you look at it, when you look at the build here, what are we buying that's really going to be affected? So it's steel and the aluminum, that curtain wall that you see on the front and the windows, that's aluminum, okay? So just to give you an idea, uh, just three weeks, four weeks ago, we bid a bleacher system. The bleacher system came in at about $450,000. And just at the end of last week, that bleacher company came back to us asking for a seven percent increase because the whole bleacher. because the whole bleacher system is aluminum. So when you look at this, uh, this building, where, where is there some potential exposure aluminum, right? The glazing is local, all the glass is local, all the brick is local. All of the special stone features would be local. The roofing system, uh, there's been back, what, what we had looked at had a mix of rubber and standing seam. Right now, it's, it's really a shed, it's a shed roof. So in theory, if you're not really looking at it, why spend money on, on a standing seam roof? You're not, standing seam roof that you're not gonna look at, look at. So now we're talking about rubber, the APM rubber, that again, we, we can, that we're, we manufacture locally. So that's how I like to break things up. And then you look at finishes, you look at carpet, paint. Uh, as long as we're not ordering tile from Italy for your, your bathrooms, uh, or special finishes. Uh, what's our exposure? Right now, there really isn't a lot of exposure except for the aluminum and the steel. That's what I see. On a mechanical side, what, what you see is, uh, it's more of lead times. There is the chip side of things. We ran into this, uh, a while, uh, just, just this past year, where there were just, we were waiting, a, a simple unit ventilator was complete, but the board that controlled it, we were waiting for the board. And that board, there were, there were, uh, the chip was manufactured, uh, in China or coming from across the way. So we waited for that, for that. And that created a long lead. And it did create, uh, a situation where we had to just rethink how we're gonna build. And then, uh, when you look at electrical, uh, main distribution panels, right now, so we were gonna do some modifications to this one here for the increase of the, of course, the building. And we're also adding a chiller. So the MVP here, as soon as we really get out to bid and really start looking at that, that's gonna be the first thing they're gonna be looking at, say, oh, that main distribution panel right now. I've been waiting sixty, sixty weeks for an MVP, an upgrade. So that would be something, is the buy that much different? No, it's waiting for it is, is the problem. So we'd be creative. And, and what, the other thing, too, is that we, what we can be creative here is, we're not gonna go out. My recommendation is, you're not gonna just go out, when we say we're going out to bid in December, I'm not going out to bid with twenty-three point seven million dollars worth. Right now, you have seventeen point seven million dollars here, you have another six million dollars here. And then there's the site work. How do we, you know, how do we break things up and be smart about it? Let's bid that site work a little later, right? We don't need a site work contractor waiting two years to build. We don't want to build, we don't wanna bid at the end of twenty twenty-five and he's not doing work until the summer of twenty twenty-seven, right? Because that's really what would happen. So we would bid that a little later. And then when you look at the work here in Maine, this really creates, you have sixty-three hundred square feet that we're touching downstairs. It, it's a nice bid package for some local contractors that maybe wouldn't be able to be able to bid that, but there are some guys that would be able to bond and bid the work that's, that's in this building. So we can be creative and control the cost out, too.
I mean, the main, I, I'll be honest, this is something that I'm very, very anxious about, right? And so I, I, I was really relieved to hear, I mean, I didn't hear it in this detail, but here are some of the news that Lou had to share with us at the last OACM meeting. Of course, nothing's certain right now, nothing's ever certain, but nothing's certain right now. But I thought it was, I found this to be a, a, um, anxiety-reducing message, you know, that I thought that the board might wanna, might, might appreciate hearing, so.
Not like you did, no. And it's true, you have to look at each build as a little differently. This build, um, is a, is a special build, but the products, a lot of the products we, we can, we can get locally. We're not waiting on something to be imported. You know, when you look at all the quarries that make all the materials, all the stone, all the brick, all the block, we have all of that locally.
The contractors gotta wanna do that because their money, gonna wanna be competitive.
Yeah. And you also said something important, which is there are enough smaller projects within this larger project that you can find local guys that would be willing to bid on it.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I like, I like this, this building. It's a nice package. We can get some, some local guys bidding on it. This package here is gonna draw some bigger guys. But, a-again, we can get, we can be versatile and, and get some competitive bidding on it.
And you haven't seen anything yet on the weakening dollar and purchasing power or anything like that on overall materials in the US? You feel right now it's steady, Eddie?
It's steady, yeah, yeah, we've been, yeah, we've been, you know, a-again, the example I gave you with the bleacher system, it's dramatic, but it's because that's, it's just all aluminum, that's what it is. And we got hit with it right away. And that's, um, I haven't gotten hit with anything else besides that yet. And I'll, of course, I'll raise my hand in the district and just say, um, there's something else coming down the pipe that I feel, you know, we gotta plan for. Even with wire, you know, electrical wire, we've gone back and forth where we play the game between copper and aluminum. If for some reason aluminum lets, copper's the product that you want anyway. So if it's, if aluminum becomes that high, okay, let's go back. So we do, we do look at that as, yes.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Very excited.
Yes, it is.
Really excited.
I agree.
Yep. All right, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Uh, and so now, um, yeah, uh, budget presentation.
Okay, next presentation. This you've seen a number of times, so I'll just give a quick, oops, what did I do here? Okay. Catherine, you wanna?
As we talked, or as Carl talked about at the beginning of the meeting, the state budget has not yet been finalized. Um, it did cause a little bit of concern among most districts, but we did receive guidance from, uh, New York State Education Department on how to make the best estimates as we await the final state budget. And all the guidance that we have received, um, supports the, our initial state aid numbers from the governor's proposal. So, um, I do believe that, you know, we've had, tonight is the night we have, we have to adopt tonight. So we, um, are pretty confident in that our numbers won't go down. I mean, we can't ever obviously promise that, but we're, we're pretty comfortable with the numbers that we have in there with the guidance that we were given as we await the budget. Um, and again, just a reminder, our proposed tax levy increase for this year is two point eight percent. If voters approve the budget, this will result in an additional six hundred and thirty-seven thousand to our tax levy for a total tax levy this year of twenty-three million, four hundred and twelve thousand and seventy-eight, or four hundred and twelve and seventy-eight, I can't say that, sorry. Now, there you go.
This, I'll move very quickly, but just a reminder, um, this process really started back in December. Uh, all of our admin team, department chairs, curriculum leaders, you know, everyone has really weighed in. And we identified, you know, some of the needs and, and wants of, of the district. And we really were able to, to accommodate, uh, nearly everything that, that was presented that, that made sense and is aligned with the goals. So for example, um, we, uh, wanted to support, uh, an ELA program uh, for our elementary school that is aligned with the science of reading, uh, that work is well underway. Both our elementary principal with, uh, Josh Elder, uh, are moving forward with a committee. Uh, and, and that would be selected, um, definitely for next year. Um, also, a software platform for, um, RTI or a multi-tiered system of supports. That work is happening, but a software system will make teachers, principals, uh, much more efficient. Pre-K program, we're excited. Uh, we, we filled all eighteen seats, I believe. There are seven, uh, families on waiting lists. Um, but that, uh, we, we anticipate will be a tremendous success. But there are some startup costs that the district had to do as far as curriculum materials, furniture, stations within the classroom, uh, some u-updates to our playground. So that's all included in this budget. Uh, increase in special education funding. We always are very thoughtful about projections that happen mid-year. The Director of Special Education presented those needs and we certainly, uh, have a budget that will, uh, support that as well. Field trip budget line, it hasn't been increased in, in many, many years. We appreciate all the work that the foundation has done to support field trips. You heard our high school students just talk about what a wonderful experience they've, they've had. But this is district-wide, so it's a, it's a significant increase. It doesn't cover all trips for all students. We will still be reaching out and, and partnering with the foundation, but, but it is an improvement. Um, also, the athletic facilities improvements, one of the main ones is, is dugouts on, on the girls' softball field. Also, uh, air conditioning in this main building. Central air will be included with all of the renovated office spaces and, and, and speech classrooms and support staff rooms. But the rest of the building does not have air conditioning. There is a requirement, when rooms hit eighty-eight degrees, students need to be relocated. At eighty-two, you have to do some mitigation. So this budget, we already started installing air condition, air conditioning in our hottest rooms that we've identified, and that will continue into next year with this budget. Um, auditorium stage and performing, performing arts, uh, equipment. You heard that, you know, we, we had a, a significant leak in the roof, plaster fell, destroyed equipment. Um, we've been jerry-rigging things to try to get through our performances. It, it's worked, but, but it really is just not sustainable. So here you have thirty thousand. We are also anticipating that our theater program over the years has accumulated some money and, and will also contribute maybe ten to fifteen thousand. And with that, we can do some significant enhancements to, to the stage. Um, and then, uh, district-wide transportation system analysis, we're doing this through OSIS. There is some, some aid on it and when it's completed, but the preliminary meeting is set up for May, but most of this work will happen in the fall. With that information, the board then could, could really make some decisions. You know, potentially you're, you're transitioning to electric buses, but also routing efficiencies, things such as that. Uh, hopefully you'll get some great ideas, uh, from the study. So I think you have a pretty comprehensive list of improvements and enhancements for the district within the budget. Catherine?
Okay. And, uh, this slide you have seen before, but again, we have a two point eight percent increase to our tax levy for next year. Um, our state aid, although our foundation aid has increased for next year, our expense-based aid is, uh, decreased. So we do have unfortunately a, uh, negative one point oh-four percent in our state aid. Hopefully, some of that will come back with, when the state budget comes through. But this is what we are using for our adopted budget for tonight. Our other revenue is up by a lot. Again, we talked about this, this is primarily tuition, but it's also our, uh, interest income. We had been extremely conservative over the past few years with how we budgeted for interest income. And even though there is some uncertainty in the market right now, we're, we were very comfortable in increasing our interest income revenue line for next year. And then each year we do allocate six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of appropriated fund balance and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reserves into the budget just in case we have any needs that, um, come up that we, we could pay a bill by using our fund balance or our reserves if necessary. So we are right now proposing a budget of thirty million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, which is a three point two-four percent increase over the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And we are at the stage in budget development where every time we present the budget, we are required to present it as in a three-part component summary. And it just does show that, uh, we do break down the budget into our administrative component, our capital component, and our largest piece of it is our programmatic component, um, which is about seventy percent of, of the budget. So it's just the numbers you've been seeing over the last few weeks, just summarized in, um, and each time I do project it, I get a little bit closer because as time goes on, again, it's a snapshot of a time with the information that I have at that time. So the projected numbers, um, this is, you know, are updated from a couple of weeks ago with where I thought we would end up. And just to go through our propositions one last time for everyone, our regular proposition is just our budget vote. Proposition two is our vehicle purchase for one sixty-five-passenger diesel school bus. Uh, that is a tax-neutral proposition because, as you know, uh, we finance it with debt, but as debt falls off, we increase the debt, so it stays flat for the tax basis. Proposition three, again, is tax-neutral. This is the change to our capital reserve fund. As you know, we spent, uh, we did have a capital reserve fund with a million dollars in it. We, the voters, um, approved using that one million dollars as part of the capital project. This is allowing us to start up the capital reserve fund again for another ten years and increase our allowable balance from the one million that we had to three million, um, maximum over, you know, over ten years. And the way that will be funded is with, if there is excess fund balance at the end of the year, um, to keep us to our four percent. We, this is now, we'll be able to put money back into capital reserve for future use. We have two, three-year terms for trustees. And our fourth, our last proposition is the Butterfield Library. Again, uh, school districts have to put a library proposition on their ballot for them if the library requests it. And the library has not gone out for an increase, um, for about ten years and they are asking for ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. It will be levied, um, on our school taxes, but then turned directly. It's a separate line on your school tax bill and it's turned directly over to the library, um, in September. And just based on our tax levy increase this year of two point eight percent, we calculated some tax impacts on a, on, based on different, uh, property market values. So we're, as you can see, a property market value of three hundred thousand dollars, we'd have an annual tax increase of about eight, one hundred and eighteen dollars. And then all the way up to a, a million-dollar home would have a annual tax increase of three hundred and ninety-three dollars. And tonight, we, uh, need to adopt the budget. It's, um, required, I have to turn in paperwork to the State Education Department tomorrow. And then we will have our public hearing on May sixth and then our vote on May twentieth. So we are coming into the homestretch. And that is all I have.
We're very familiar with those numbers, I'm sure.
You're very lucky.
And while we, and while we're here, I actually just wanna take the opportunity to thank the, uh, leadership of the Haldane Arts Alliance. Well, obviously, thank our district folks again. But, um, on Monday, Carl, Catherine, Megan, and I, Maggie, met with leadership from the Haldane Arts Alliance, the Athletic Booster Club, the School Foundation, and the PTA. And, um, everybody was really happy to hear what was in the budget. Clearly, we had support from those folks. Um, they'll be reaching out to their membership. Um, and we offered to, um, you know, support their communication in any way. That, that would be helpful, so thanks to them for that. And thanks to you all for that.
Thank you.
All right, so next on our agenda is the first opportunity for communication from the public. The Haldane Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. This first public comment session is considered for comments on special presentations and active agenda items. For those who would wish to speak to the board, we'd ask you to sign in, state your name for the record, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. We strongly discourage disparaging remarks and any discussion of district personnel. And although we would not engage in dialogue, we would be listening and we'd ask you to leave your contact information so that we can follow up with you. Next on the agenda, we have, um, our administrator information reports. There was so much great stuff in them. Um, I actually, one of the things I, I mean, there's so many things that I noticed, but one of the things I just wanted to call out, um, was from Josh's report and actually some of the fruits of that are the hiring that the district has done and how.
That the district has done and how really grateful I am that Haldane is able to attract such strong. Candidates, you know, I, I've worked in so many school districts across the country where there are just these profound staffing shortages and. We are so fortunate not to, um, be facing them and I, I, you know, it speaks. Is there anything else, anybody else wanted to call out about that?
Well, Dr. Kation's not here, but I did just want to call out, um, on her report, the thoughtfulness that went into, uh, developing the vision. Of pupil personnel services, you know, really starting with the school vision, saying, you know, we really just want to use the school vision. Kids getting services are not, the expectation should be no different. And then really kind of incorporating ideas of universal design. And some other core beliefs that guide the work of PPS. So just wanted to call out the thoughtfulness of that.
Alright. Next on, um, is, uh, the, we had a committee minutes, and the wellness committee were there for us to. Review and some of the work, continued work that that group is doing, which we appreciate. Um, and we'll move into, it's, I don't want to go too fast, sometimes I. Next we have the consent, the minutes from our last board meeting. Uh, may I have a motion please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Next is the consent agenda, uh, financial, may I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And. I, is there anything, some exciting textbooks?
We're gonna give a minute if you want for, uh, Julia to share some information about that.
Oh, great. Yeah, that's good. Yes.
We are looking to pilot, I would call it a pilot, um, the human geography course, um, at the high school. Um, we know human geography can also be associated with the University of Albany. It is an accredited, uh, course through Albany. It's also a college board accredited course, so it could be at an AP level. Um, next year we're looking to pilot it. We're, we're not jumping on with Albany, we're not jumping on with college board. Um, but there appears to be interest in offering the course. Um, we're really looking at, uh, units of study on population and migration, cultural geography. Urban geography, political geography, rural and urban land, and economic geography. And you'll see that. Um, in the proposed coursework, but we are aligning with college board as well. So there's an alignment, but the course is not ending in an EP exam. Down the road, open a conversation, seeing how it goes, um. But that's where we're, we're at right now with human geography. So there's a lot of information out there. Um, Ms. Seacor has already started to develop her units of study. Um, we'll give her some time over the summer to further develop, uh, the course. Um, and this is part of the process. As we develop new courses, we always bring the information to the board and it would be a new textbook. Um, I do have copy on my desk. I meant to bring it down, I apologize. Um, but she did go through the three course, the three textbook for review process, um, and that which follows board policy.
Thank you.
It would be one, so, um, you know, small school.
Right.
Tried to offer elective courses every other year, not necessarily offering the same one every year. Sociology is a very popular elective, um, in the social studies department, like history department. Um, and she also teaches sociology. So it really depends upon numbers and class sizes, right? Like, we're not seeing a reduction next year. We're at right now seventy-two incoming freshmen. And we have seventy-four leaving seniors. So we're not seeing a decline. Um, so it really depends on how many of those core classes we have to offer. To then look at how many electives can we offer? So this would be one of those that might alternate with something like sociology.
That makes sense.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any of them? Uh, consent agenda, now, may I have a motion? Uh, I think there are a couple of things I want to call out. Exciting things on our personnel agenda tonight.
I'll just say briefly, we, um, as Peggy said earlier, we've been able to attract high-level candidates. We have three faculty positions that we're recommending to the board this evening. Uh, each one has, has a highly qualified candidate that went through a very rigorous, um, selection process. So, um, Ms. Nicole Rojas is, is for, uh, elementary special education class. She comes with us, uh, to us with wonderful experience in both special education and reading. We also have a psychologist, Dr. Avikic. Avichik?
Ivichik.
Ivichik, thank you, my apologies. I, I did meet, meet with all of them at the final stage of the process. Um, she is not only a certified school psychologist, but a licensed psychologist in New York State. Has her doctorate from Hofstra, comes to us with wonderful experience. So we are very excited to have her, uh, join the team. Uh, and then last but not least, uh, here joining us this evening is Nicole Murphy. And Nicole is not a stranger to Haldane. She's started as a per diem sub. Worked her way up to a leave replacement ELA teacher this past year, has done outstanding work. Um, from her colleagues as, as well as her principal, uh, she's very, very responsive to feedback, has a real growth mindset. Pursued while here, pursued degree in, in literacy and special education. So has multiple certifications, which is great for a small place like.
And seven-nine too, wait, it's, it's, yeah. That's a lot to do.
Yes, at elementary and secondary. So, um, we are very pleased. She did go through a, a very rigorous process as well. It, it wasn't a done deal, but, um, we're happy that she emerged as, as our finalist and she's here this evening and. We recommend them to you with, with, uh, tremendous confidence. Okay, we'll do well.
Very exciting.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Fantastic.
Alright, so all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Really, we really appreciate. It's very nice to get to meet people as they come in. So I know you've been here for a while, but welcome.
Always awesome.
So now we're transitioning to, um, new business. Um, we have the CSE, CPSU recommendations, so we have the recommended acting.
We resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools. The Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education. And preschool special education as presented.
We have a motion please?
So moved.
All of them in favor? Any opposed? Uh, next, we have our candidates for trustees of the Haldane Board of Education.
This is not a motion, this is just.
I know. Actually, I guess I can just say it. So, um, the applications were due on Monday and we received applications from Ezra and from Sean. Those were the two that we had. I guess, um.
Good for us.
That's great. Um, and I think some this morning you all decided the order that folks are gonna be in or something like that.
Good old fashioned drawing.
So anyway, so we now have really, the, the public now knows everything that's going to be on the ballot for, um, May, uh, twentieth. We have our four propositions and we have our two candidates. So, uh, thanks to all for stepping up to run again. Um, next is, uh, do we want to do any kind of school? Budget, community engagement opportunities, right? So, and this would be something like, um. Historically, these aren't super well attended, but I think we should actually go ahead and offer them. I mean, we did have a couple of people come and we met a few minutes before board meeting. I would, I would be, I don't think the whole board needs to come. But before the board, whole board.
We did it for the referendum, yeah.
Yeah, we did that and, and people came and I think we could definitely send it out locally. I think we could also put a little ad in the paper. Um, I certainly don't mind coming the thirty minutes, like at six-thirty before our meeting on the. Six. I don't know if there's other things folks think that we should.
I agree that they haven't historically been very well attended.
But we should still offer them.
We should, yeah. I mean, I think in particular, there are a couple of things this year that it would be good for us to be able to address openly and directly.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing, oh, you know, another thing that we could do would be, um. To just maybe more locally, maybe, um, choose two after-school days. On the playground for people to, for a board member to, to be at, um, I think, and then send that out. It, uh, as an email?
Sure, yes. If we sent it as an email, it would only go to our Haldane.
That's true.
But, but those are the people who are gonna be on the playground.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what I was thinking. I mean, that, I, I, um. I.
And then if you want to do the thirty minutes, we could include that in an ad.
I think we could do.
And generally we do an ad reminding people about the vote anyway, so you've mentioned it in that same.
I thi- I think so.
We should have the Blue Devil mascot there, so people know. Not just picking up our kid.
But Ezra, you, you wear the mascot. And be in the.
For the, yeah, um. I don't, you know, I, I never really know exactly the, the best way to do these, um.
Yeah, two years ago, we did have a separate forum. I think last year we resolved to encouraging people to. Attend the public hearings since that's really, I think, what it's designed to be. Um, but yes, for the referendum, we did it a little bit before meeting, so.
When does the mailing go out?
People will receive it in that week preceding the vote.
So after May sixth, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in the printer's hands tonight, but they can't start until we got through tonight's adoption. So. It takes a little bit.
I mean, we could do a Zoom thing the week before. When you say it's gonna be in people's hands the night.
It should, oh, it should arrive in their mailboxes in that week before the vote. So the vote is the week, the vote is the twentieth, that's the week of the nineteenth, they'll get it the week before.
Um, do we want to do, and, and again, this would be something that I would do with like Carl and Catherine, but do we want to offer like as, as, as? We could, as, a Zoom meeting that people could join, like after work?
We could, I mean, if you do registration and see what interest is.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes we try to encourage, uh, RSVP.
Yeah, yeah, it's just kind of sense.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
And so I can arrange with you all to do that on maybe even like a Thursday.
Yeah, we should just pick our date and time soon if we want to put it in a print ad.
Okay.
Um, let's be right this minute.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Why don't, why don't we, to make sure people have it in their hands, let's try to do it maybe on that Wednesday night unless, or we'll, but we'll fix, we'll. Okay, figure out the date.
And if we, and if we did decide to do something that was on a blacktop kind of open, what?
And maybe we should ask the PTA.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I think that's a better way to do that. Instead of us arranging that, why don't I, why don't? Um, why don't I reach out to Bill Colias?
Yeah.
Um, and, and offer to do that and want any of us could do that. Um, the, I, the, it's not gonna be available for a while, but. Megan and everyone who worked on it, Catherine, Carl, the newsletter really clearly lays out.
Mm-hmm.
The different propositions and I didn't share it with people because it, it wasn't super complicated. But the letter from the board also really walks people through, like, there are these four propositions and. And, and I, and I think it really, it under, it's trying to sort of scaffold. For people to help them understand what's going on. And so when people have questions, the newsletter is gonna be a good source. And actually, I mean, maybe we go ahead and send you all just a copy of it so that you're familiar with it too.
That would be great.
That's something.
Yeah, I can share it electronically, yeah.
Um, so before the meeting on the sixth, we'll come up with a date for Zoom. I'll reach out to Bill Colias about seeing if the PTA wants to organize.